Hello, I'm Frank Caruso. We are back with part three of the Optimist Recipients. And again, I would like to say a big shout out to the teachers that participated, Sherry Pollak for bringing this to my attention, and all the young people that again participated in letting me into their lives, into their workplace, all the people that helped behind the scenes there. And again, a thank you to Tour Horse Insurance, who's there for OCA Media, Oregon Life, to produce these wonderful episodes of people in and around our community of Oregon, Wisconsin. So enjoy this episode, part three of Oregon Life.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Schmidt. I'm the online blended learning coordinator for the district, and I work predominantly at the high school. I've known Delaney Neinheis since her freshman year. So for the last four years, she's taken a class with me or sometime in the course of that year. Delaney is like exemplifies optimist. She's a smile waiting to happen when I ask her a question. She's always willing to be helpful. She helps others. What I think is really amazing, though, is that I feel like Delaney is somewhat of an unsung hero. She, her sophomore year, she went out for track. And when I said, "Delaney, I didn't know you were fast," and she said, "Yeah, I didn't either." And here she made it to state as a sophomore. I think last year she placed at state in track. But that's just how carefree Delaney is. On the basketball court, she's a beast, and yet she does it with a smile. And so I just think it's so fun to see how talented she is and yet quiet and positive she is to her teammates and her classmates. So on the court, in the classroom, wherever I've seen Delaney, she's just positive. And so I was honored to nominate her for this award.
Hi, I'm Delaney Neinheis. I'm a senior at Oregon High School, and I was nominated by Ms. Schmidt for the Optimist Award. I just remember receiving it. I got this notification in my email. I'm like, hmm, what is this? You know, titled Optimist. And then I was starting to read it, and one of my friends actually got it last month. So it was just really exciting to read it and then to later find out it was from Ms. Schmidt, who's just the sweetest. It was really exciting, and I was super honored to receive it. So when we went to receive the award, me and my family, you started and then you said the Optimist Creed, which was actually really cool. There was a bunch of like cool messages. And then you went and shared something you're optimist about. And this was just at the start of my basketball season. So it was really exciting. We had our first game the next day, so I was really excited and optimistic about that. Right now, I'm working as a CNA here in Oregon at Beehive, and I just really, it's a really fulfilling career caring for these people. And it's a great like stepping stone to my future like plans, working, I hope to become a nurse. And I think it'll just be like a very rewarding career. I really enjoy working and helping with people, and I can't wait.
Next on Oregon Life. I was always interested in art from a young age. I started drawing really young, all through high school. I loved drawing. I was really into graffiti a lot, and then that kind of inspired me to get more into fine art because I noticed that the level of graffiti was just getting so cool with three dimension, all of that. So that really inspired me to pursue fine art more.
Okay, it's 5 o'clock. Let's get started. I'll call the Village Board of Oregon to order for Monday, May 6, 2024. Ask the clerk to call the role, please.
Beshin? Oh, she's not here. Higgins?
Here.
Kirchdorfer?
Here.
Manke?
Here.
McDaniel?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
And Van Campen?
Here. Thank you. Item three, approval of April 15, 2024, and April 16, 2024, Village Board meeting minutes if correct, and correction of mistakes if any. Recommendation motion to approve as presented. Tom and Tim. Discussion changes, edits. Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries. Thank you. Item four, public appearances, comments, and communications. Items for discussion on a possible action, public comment. As part of the agenda, allow those members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. Anyone here for public comments? Anyone? Please.
I know. We were just here because we had a letter with a suggestion for something, and we thought it was a meeting just about that.
Well, that will be on the agenda, but did you like to speak, make a comment about it specifically, or now would be the time if you would like to make a comment?
I'm just curious. Number one, while we're going to start, number two, while we're still putting aside our...
Okay, if you want to come up to the microphone, please.
There's a public hearing.
Okay.
We can't hear you.
Okay, there'll be a public hearing, and the details will be covered then. And there'll also be, I've just been reminded, there'll be a time then for public comment if you choose to.
Are you in here or another meeting?
At this meeting.
Tonight.
Anyone else for public comment? No, going once, going one. Okay. All right, hearing none.
Did you, she said?
Someone?
She did raise her hand.
Please come up.
What do you mean, public comment?
You can speak on any item on or off the agenda for up to three minutes.
Okay, I was just curious. I brought this up at the last meeting.
You have to come.
Sorry, I have to come up.
Okay. So at the last meeting?
I'm sorry. You have to speak into the microphone, sorry.
It's okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Go ahead and have a seat.
Yes. It's okay.
We need your name and address, too, please.
Okay, so my name is Jessica Hutter, 524 South Main Street in Oregon. I brought up at the last meeting about making it a two-way parking spot, or like that. Do you remember that?
Yes.
Because it's only one side and that, so I was just curious.
We're gonna change it to two sides.
We are?
Yes, we are.
Yay! Okay, that was my...
Wasn't that easy?
That was it.
Good for you.
Just to answer that, I could not find any reason, I think it was a long time ago when they said that. I can't find any good reason not to change it back, and so that's the plan.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
And then out of curiosity, we do have a tree that's on the terrace, I think it's called. Are you guys gonna take that down? I guess there's been a lot of complaints from our neighbors, and that's not, I don't know if that's our responsibility.
Do you know what tree there is?
I do not. Is it regards maintenance of the tree, or they just don't like it?
Yes, because it's hitting the wires.
Okay, so that would be Alliance, I believe, has the rights to come in and
Trim.
Trim that back. That would be something that they would do if they were concerned about it.
Okay.
They will be out replacing gas in this neighborhood ahead of our project, and so they will certainly have eyes on it. The way that we typically deal with these during construction projects is we do our darndest not to disrupt the trees, assuming they're not dying in some way a hazard, you know, roots are not bringing up the sidewalk to the extent that we can't put a new sidewalk in, but we do try to work around those. So provided that Alliance comfortable with it and that we're not meeting those criteria, we'll try to save it.
Okay. Do I need to call them? Am I supposed to, or?
Nope, nope, don't worry about it. Let's let them, their crews, come out. That's assuming that you're in no imminent danger, that it's not sparking anything. Yeah, as long as you haven't noticed anything that you're really concerned about, you can let them come out. They should be out around middle of this month to start their work, and I'll flag it for the lead worker on that project and just ask him to take a look and note anything that he sees.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comments? Seeing none. Item four, the presentation from Vandewall and Associates regarding updates on zoning code text amendments. And I see Sonya is here to help us out with this.
Good afternoon. Sonya Kriesel with Vandewall and Associates. I'm here just to provide an introduction on this topic. This is an item that we have been working closely with village staff on and that as a group, we've been working with the Plan Commission on for a number of months. These are zoning text amendments, or in other words, amendments to the zoning code, sort of narrative language that you apply to all of your development regulations in the community. These have been identified over time by staff or by us as amendments that are needed to address a variety of issues, and those issues could be just the fact that the regulation is unclear or difficult to administer, could be improved or tweaked in a little way. Or another example is instances where the regulation is out of date or not sort of commonly applied that way anymore, or out of compliance with state law. So there are various groupings of potential zoning text amendments that have been discussed over time by staff, and this group here represents what we would call like the lower-hanging fruit, the easier ones to potentially check off before moving on to ones that we would anticipate having more policy discussion. Like I said, the Plan Commission has been reviewing these. They are in a nearly final form, getting ready to move on towards public hearing this summer. So we wanted to bring them here for your information and give you a quick look into them, knowing that they'll come back here later after Plan Commission makes a recommendation. So I'll walk through each of them just really quickly to explain what the intent is without going into the detail of the actual red line changes themselves. The first one is regarding the definition of family. The purpose here is to expand that a little bit, just to reflect more modern arrangements of household living. Item two is driveway pavement, driveway and pavement setbacks. Here, the current regulation is for a five-foot paved surface setback from property lines. Village staff was getting a lot of requests over time to potentially take that down to a lower amount. We saw no problem with going down to three, especially for the residential zoning districts, so that's what this amendment reflects. We did maintain the five-foot pavement setback for the higher density districts, commercial and multifamily, just knowing that the density and level of development there is a little bit more, and we want to make sure that there's enough room to accommodate stormwater, runoff, snow storage, things like that. Number three is exposed fasteners. This is an aesthetic issue for building design where you'll have a screw on a metal roof that is exposed, and it can sort of clash aesthetically and also rust and have drainage marks coming off and things like that. So typically exposed fasteners are prohibited specifically in residential districts and things like the institutional zoning district. This just clarifies that it does, this regulation or limitation does continue to apply in those districts, but it does not apply to industrial. So industrial development may use exposed fasteners. And then we're also including in here that when those are used, that they're the same color as the neighboring material. So black metal roof, black screw. Chickens and beekeeping, this would address land uses that are not currently referenced in the zoning codes. So the goal here is to make these, you know, less open to interpretation, so your regulations are clearly laid out there, so people know exactly what may be done. So it establishes those as land uses, permits them in residential districts, and lays out a lot of detail in terms of fence setbacks, chicken run locations, whether roosters are allowed or not, they are not. And then also having a license system in place so that you would renew that annually. Number five, fence height. This, I would say, overall provides a little bit more flexibility in fencing. Fences in the front yard used to be only 30 inches tall. It allows you to increase to that full three-foot height. It also clarifies in a side yard, those used to be restricted to a shorter height, but this would allow those to go up to six feet tall. And this was identified as a needed change just for corner lots in particular. You have two street frontages, so just gives the property owner a little bit more flexibility to maintain that lower aesthetic fence in the front, but have the higher one on the side. There's another change to fences, too. They may be placed within stormwater easement areas, but knowing that the stormwater easement or drainage structure is meant to allow stormwater to flow through, we wanted to make sure that there was some sort of simple mechanism built in that would allow stormwater to continue to flow through. So we have that statement in there, as well as a requirement that they are a maximum of 60% solid or opaque, so they're 40% transparent or allowing stormwater to move through, through the gaps. Item six is just bringing in some clarified language to reflect how statutes deal with variances. So there are two types of variances. Area variances deal with relief from setbacks. I have a 10-foot requirement, but I'd like eight. I need an area variance. A use variance is much less common, but that would be my property has no economic viable use under the zoning code, and I need a use variance to allow me to do something there. The text amendment here defines those and then just kind of clarifies what the procedures are. For each, there's really no substantive policy change. Downtown design overlay, and there's some highlighted text here to reflect an update since the time that the memo was originally written. So what this one started as was just clarifying areas on the map and tying the map, the zoning map, to the zoning text. You have a few different overlay districts. Historic downtown overlay, there's a neighborhood district overlay, and there is also this language in the code for corridor and gateway overlay district. The text existed in the code, but said district was never actually mapped on the map, so it wasn't actually effective anywhere. And we found that not only was it not mapped, but there really aren't any standards identified. What would those design standards be? Back up a step, an overlay district, what is that exactly? You have your base zoning district, so for example, you might have commercial property zoned planned business, and there's a set of standards in there that all of those properties have to adhere to. An overlay usually comes on the top and brings an additional set of regulations. A really common one is natural resources overlay, you know, floodplain, wetland, or the downtown. We have downtown properties, but we have historic character, so we want this overlay on top. The same principle and sort of concept applies here along your corridors or your front doors to the community, these main entryways that invite people in. There's some desire to raise the standard a little bit for design there. So we at Plan Commission talked about what you have today, not a lot of really sort of robust design regulations built into the code, and we're just starting to explore exactly what this would look like. So stay tuned for that. There's no red line text in the packets that would define that exactly for tonight, but we're gonna continue to explore that with the Plan Commission and bring something forward for them to review. Number eight here is signage, and you have a modern sign code, so there aren't a lot of changes. This is just a small tweak specifically for drive-through land uses. So the culvers, when it came through, double drive-through lane, something that wasn't accommodated in the sign code that could be allowed easily, so that went through a negotiated zoning district process, which is a little bit longer, a little bit more involved for plan development zoning. This would rectify that situation and sort of allow two drive-through lanes. I think the language is specifically still by a conditional use permit. And then it also increases the size from 24 square feet, which can be pretty small for a menu board, to 32 square feet. And then finally, number nine, lodging land uses. This just references the correct statute for, I believe it was bed and breakfast and similar land uses, so that when staff is administering the code, it's really clear, you know, what's a short-term rental, what's a bed and breakfast, what applies. And so just having that in there makes things a little bit easier to understand. So again, just providing this update here for your information. If you have any quick questions, we could probably address those, but otherwise we'll stay tuned for further feedback.
Amanda?
Yeah, I was wondering, like, for the chickens and the bees, like, did you base these rules on another municipality, or where'd you kind of come up with it? I'm just curious.
Yeah, the language is taken from a lot of different models. In particular, I think the, these started with Middleton, a model from Middleton that had just gone through review and update, so we felt like it was a fresh example to use. But then all of those models are then based on sort of best practices. So the beekeeping one has a lot of standards in there that are specific and well researched to bees and the nature of bees.
Okay, and just a follow-up. I'm curious if there's any, and I don't know how to handle it, if it'd be an ordinance or what, if people are sort of gonna be grandfathered in, people, for example, who already have chicken coops or beehives that are the wrong size or whatever, if there's a way that we can, you know, allow them to kind of keep what they have as long as it's in decent condition, I don't know what the plans would be for that.
Yeah. One note with the kind of research in the language that we had, at least for the bees, I did reach out to a local beekeeper that does kind of commercial scale stuff, and she reviewed it, too, and thought that the regulations were pretty straightforward. We actually simplified a lot of the language from the Middleton model, just to make it easy to understand and apply. We did talk about grandfathering because there are certainly chickens, I saw people, we're not the chicken police, but we know they're out there. I think what we talked about is this year is kind of more of outreach and education. We'll actually have a chicken and bee permit somewhere to like dog licenses. So we'll have that getting out on the website and some more PR that this is happening. So I think we tried to reach out to folks that, you know, we know several of the addresses that have chickens already and a couple that have bees, so just let them know we have this process, and then it would be kind of an annual permit. So, you know, for 2025, they'd have the opportunity to apply for that winter, spring, somewhere in there.
So I guess what I'm getting at, too, is like, I want to make sure that the people who have chickens and bees in the village are being invited to the table to have input before we pass it and tell them, here's the new regulations. So like, I know there's a public hearing, we said, when is that?
Yeah, we haven't set the date yet.
But it'll come.
Yeah, yeah, so probably early to midsummer. So, yeah, the folks that we know, of course, there might be some that we're not aware of, but, you know, if you guys are aware of any sites, feel free to send me an email just with the address, and I can get their contact info and make sure they're aware that this is being discussed, you know, here's kind of the draft. If you have any questions or concerns, let me know. This is where we're aiming to adopt it. But yeah, they're meant to be, again, they're pretty standard. It's meant for kind of animal welfare, making sure they have enough square footage, clean water, things like that. So probably things that most people are already doing. But the way kind of to explain it to folks is it's to protect them to continue to be able to have that use on their property, as well as kind of protect the neighbors so that there's an understanding that, you know, the chickens aren't supposed to be flying over fences, and you shouldn't have roosters and things like that.
Okay, and then I was kind of, one last thing, and this is a definition thing about the chickens, the definition of backyard versus side yard, and how we're defining that, because I'm wondering how people that live on corner lots would determine what's the backyard, what's a side yard? Do we have, is there an official definition for those?
Well, there's the street to the side yard, and so I don't think we would, I think this is restricted to backyard, correct? Yeah, so it would be where the definition of, I don't think street side yards would qualify as a backyard.
So what do you mean by street side yard?
On the corner lot. Yeah, so if the house faces one direction and their side of their house is on the street, also on a street, that's, that is their street side yard.
Their backyard is.
Yeah, so they'd have, they have the same kind of setback as they do in the front yard, as they do in that street side yard. So they couldn't have the coop like right up along the street.
But they could have it in their backyard, opposite their front door, even though it's along a sidewalk, it's considered their backyard?
No, it wouldn't be along the sidewalk.
Not, not along it, but like in, it has to be in from the sidewalk, but like if...
No, it wouldn't, it would still be, it would be, they're always gonna be at least 30 feet, 20 to 30 feet, depending on the setbacks of a sidewalk.
So 30 feet from a sidewalk on the side of the property for corner lots?
I think in one or two subdivisions, we have specific setbacks for, let me...
That's gonna eliminate a lot of people who have chickens right now. I'm just trying to figure out, wrap my head around what that looks like, so.
There's one I'm thinking about, but I think that one is actually behind their house.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I mean, without measuring, but I think if we reach out to these people and they say, "Hey, this is too far, because then I couldn't have it in my yard because my yard's only 30 feet across," or, you know...
See, the difficulty is, is they're not permitted now, and that's, and that's where we've kind of said, you know, we have to catch up our ordinances to that. So that's where, as far as grandfathering, that's a touchy subject, because now you're basically grandfathering an existing non-conforming use? That would be, yeah.
We always try to work, I mean, we always approach compliance with education first and just explaining this is why the regulations are the way that they are. If there's some kind of extenuating circumstance and, you know, their lot's really narrow or something, try to work with people and find a reasonable solution.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so the discussion is ongoing.
Yeah, yeah, and like the fencing about the side yard, that's when I had to step out, but that's a lot of the reason that we are moving forward with that is because that big street side yard setback of 30 feet was making a lot of people not be able to use their corner lot to its whole extent. So we kind of tried to find something that was more reasonable to allow people to have better use of their corner lots.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you. I wanted to talk a little bit about the definition of family. I definitely supported the idea of expanding and simplifying it, but I feel like the text as it stands today still has a lot in there that's pretty restrictive. A duly appointed custodial relationship, so that would exclude a family where we decided to let our teenager go live with her aunt and uncle for a couple of years, for whatever reason, wouldn't necessarily be endorsed by the court.
That'd be related by blood, wouldn't it? That'd be related by blood, wouldn't it?
I didn't feel like it would fit the definition that was in there.
Maybe not, okay.
There was also the functional family is limited to four people. That seems somewhat restricted, and I completely didn't understand the reference to addiction in the midst of that text. That came from like, out of nowhere, addiction and drug use.
Four, so the first one, we can look into that, maybe loosen up the duly-appointed custodial relationship or it might fall into another category like related by blood. Your second comment, four persons, not so related. So a family is no more than four unrelated persons. So just to clarify, you could have a family of 10, but you cannot have more than four unrelated, non-familial, related people under this definition. The controlled substance, I don't have a super good background on where that came from, but I do know that it's related to the terminology that's being used in subsection two there. So the Fair Housing Amendment Act, I think there's just some differentiation drawn with why people are living in a housing situation like that. And this exempts a different type of housing situation that might be designed for those under the Controlled Substance Act. I don't have a...
Oh, okay, so it would not be permitting a specific type of housing?
Correct.
I see, okay.
But allowing this other opportunity to clarify persons with disabilities live together.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Sonya, please, and to be continued, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five, approval vouchers in the amount of $1,025,082.7. Staff recommendation motion to approve as presented, Jason and Amanda. Questions, comments?
A lot of vehicles on this one, just noticed. Different kinds of vehicles, but vehicles nonetheless.
Brian, snowplows in the spring.
Actually, that's a huge win for us.
Just commenting lots of...
Yeah, just so you, real quickly, those, we had the, we had the one snowplow truck on order for over two years, and we canceled that order earlier this year because they still weren't, they were still nine months out. We changed to Western Star, had those within two months of ordering. So, but now they go to be outfitted at the shop, so that'll be another couple of months, but, yeah, we're excited they're in.
Amanda.
Yeah, I saw one, the, Under Town and Country, the 101-9. It's, looks like exactly the same number, same date, same amount. Is that a duplicate?
Good question.
27, 250, twice.
Are you looking at the entirety of the list there?
No, just the last two.
Just those last two, yeah.
They're exact, everything is the same on them.
Usually an invoice number or something is different indicating that it's a different thing.
And while they're doing that, congratulations on two new squad cards.
So this, this is kind of just probably my poor notation. Typically, the way that these are split up is two different capital accounts, and in this case, this is the design for the wastewater treatment facility. Part of it went to what we call the structures account. So it's for design of structures, buildings, that kind of thing. And I believe part of it went to the pumping equipment account for equipment pre-selection design work. So it just wasn't written out fully, and so the accountants weren't able to write what I didn't.
Thank you.
If the general ledger account code would be showing, you would see that it's two different account codes. So that would distinguish that it's not the same invoice.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we have a motion, second, so we'll call a vote.
McDaniel.
Yes.
Van Campen.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Kirchdorfer.
Yes.
Manki.
Yes.
Beshin.
Yes.
And Higgins.
Yes. Thank you. Item six, consent agenda, none. Item seven, reports of committees, item for discussion and/or possible action, a sustainability committee. Number one, resolution number 24-11, declaring May 24th, May 2024 as less mo may. Staff recommendation motion to approve as presented. Anybody want to speak on this? Amanda?
I'll not speak, I was going to make the motion to.
Okay, we'll take that, too. Okay, we have a motion by Amanda, second by Carleen. We had a clear memo in the packet. Does anyone want to speak beyond that? Questions?
As the sustainability rep, I think the memo is great. It's, again, kind of a procedural move, and like Martin said at the end of his memo, we're hoping to sort of implement this in a way that we don't need to do this every May. So, but I think it's been good, we've learned some lessons and made some adjustments.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries, thank you. Item eight, unfinished business, item for discussion, possible action, A. 2020, excuse me, 2024 South Main Street in utility improvements projects, special segment assessments. Open the public hearing. First, I would ask if there are any staff comments other than the memo. Hello?
Nope, I'm sorry, I was looking at a different memo, I apologize. Nope, it's fairly direct and I think spelled out in the memo.
Okay, then I would ask if there are any public comments. You had expressed a topic, interest in this topic earlier, would you like to speak? We could state, stake your name and address and speak into the microphone, please.
Pam Mathur, 648 South Main Street. Just wondering when it's going to start.
Lauren, can I help you with that?
Yep, so right now, the scheduled start date is early June. I believe that they have set June 5th as their target start date. So that's when we'd be looking at probably mostly just mobilization into the area.
Okay, so we were just wondering what the, are driveways going to be blocked? I mean, where are people going to be parking if they can't get in their driveway?
So the driveways shouldn't be blocked right off the bat. The one time that you won't potentially have access to the driveway is when the driveway is actually being re-poured, and that will happen well down the line. So contractors' equipment should not be parked in front of anybody's personal driveway at any, you know, for any extended amount of time at any time. So if you have any issues with that, please give us a call. But the contractor working on this, this is very standard practice. They will be mobilizing and staging all of their equipment over on the detention basin side of the street.
And the sidewalk is going on the other side of the street?
It is, yep.
We just, we just think that's silly because nobody, we watch school kids every day and nobody goes that way.
Oh, they will, they will, and now that it's on that, yeah, we need it on both sides.
No, we don't, but, that's not, just our opinion. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else for, please?
Out of curiosity, what end, out of curiosity, what end is it going to start on first for the construction?
It will almost certainly start at the north end, because they always work these projects in a very specific order, bottom to top in space, and that's through the utilities. So sanitary is always at the bottom, water is up next, then it's storm, then it's street. The only sanitary that's being replaced is actually the older sanitary that is up towards the state-street intersection. So they'll start up at that point and then work their way down to the south.
So it is starting closer to downtown and then going to South Perry?
Correct, yep.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else, please? Please state your name and address and speak into the microphone, please.
My name is Kathy Schlapper, and I live at 516 South Main Street. My concern is, at the last meeting we were at, I thought that they had approximated $15 per foot. That's what I wrote down, and we're into $23.12 per foot. And I'm wondering what caused the large difference.
Which meeting, was the previous meeting?
Not here, but the meeting about the project itself. Couple months ago, I can't remember the date, where we originally talked about it. Yeah, I wrote down $15 per foot, early May to late August is approximate time. Is that still the timeframe is another thing. But yes, the concern is, how come it's so much more?
I can speak to that. So I'll answer the timing question first, because that one's pretty easy to get out of the way. Right now, as I was mentioning, they are predicting that this will start early June. I think it is June 5th, and then contractually, they're obligated to end by September 15th. Right now, their schedule has them ending on September 5th, I believe. So because of the proximity to the school, that is an end date that we will be looking at very closely, and we will be watching them to make sure that that gets done. As to the assessments differing from the estimated number, unfortunately, these estimates that we give out or mention at public meetings are just that, they're estimates, and we're kind of at the mercy of what the bidding climate is at the time that we put these things out to bid. So things came back a little bit higher than the engineer had estimated on the sidewalk in particular. And so that's why you see that discrepancy in number.
Is there anything we can do to change that?
Unfortunately, no, they do bid on a unit cost, and so that, that isn't negotiable with the contractor.
How long do we have to pay this?
That's a great question, Lisa. I'm going to kick that to you.
It says it's a five-year installment.
Well, it depends, well, the project should end on time, because there's a sequence of events that have to happen. But the last street that we did, because we didn't meet that timeframe, that one was a little bit different. This one, if it meets the timeframe, you'll have a five-year period. So one-fifth of the costs would go on your real estate tax bill annually, but then there is interest that's applied to that annually, too. So you would have the option of, I don't think that's, is it, I guess 5%? I didn't know if it had been set yet. So you can pay a portion of it, you can pay, have it go on your real estate tax bill for one year. You could come back throughout the summer before the next tax bill is, goes out and pay the remainder of it. It just, I mean, there's a lot of options, but right now, you would have up to five years to pay for it.
What are the options without any interest?
It would have to be paid, well, it will go on your...
So you have less than a year.
No, not necessarily, because this year, when it goes on the tax, on your real estate tax bill, there would not be any interest applied to that balance.
Is that going to be explained in the bill then?
Yeah, it'll be a separate line item on the tax bill. It's kind of down underneath where the taxing jurisdiction information is. There's a box underneath that where special assessments go.
And the way that we, as Lisa kind of mentioned, the way that we have done this in the past is that this year has no interest, even the chunk that goes on the tax bill. If you choose to just take that 20%, have it applied to the tax bill, if you pay that additional 80% prior to next year's 2025 tax roll coming out, it's still at zero interest. It's not going to bump up after November of this year to the 5%. So until that dollar amount goes on the tax roll in 2025, it will be at 0% interest.
Thank you. Anyone else for this item? Okay, well, close the public hearing. Move on to item two, resolution number 24-10, final resolution authorizing public improvements and loving special assessments against benefited property for the 2024 South Main Street in utility improvement projects, staff recommendation motion to approve as presented. Jason and Amanda. Questions, comments? Hearing done. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both?
I'm just struggling, that's all.
All right, thank you.
No surprise.
Item B, review bids for 2024 Streets Resurfacing and Maintenance. Contract A, South Perry Parkway from Alpine Parkway Termini to the west edge of the railroad tracks, South Borough Oak Avenue from Cherry Wood Drive to South Perry Parkway and Union Road between South Perry Parkway and Lincoln Road, and potentially accept the base bid, supplemental bid, and alternate bid, and award the contract to Painted Owen in an amount of $468,298.20. Staff recommendation motion to approve as presented. Amanda, and Tom. Anything from staff, anything extra from the memo, or?
One thing that I do want to highlight, and it is in the memo, but just to clarify, there is a small piece of the base bid amount, as well as the entirety of the alternate bid amount, that cover roads that are shared, jurisdictionally shared by the town of Oregon and the village of Oregon. Right now, we have assumed that, that we're moving forward with those, and that the town will reimburse the village for their portion of those roads in 2025. The town has indicated their interest in doing so, particularly for the portion of South Perry Parkway that's included under the base bid, but they haven't formally taken action to approve that yet. So they will be doing that in, I believe, a week or two. If they choose, for whatever reason, not to go forward with this, we will likely adjust the scope of this project accordingly to kind of remove those sections.
Thank you. Lynn, please.
So I'm going to make sure I'm where I need to be geographically. These are both the roads by RCI, correct?
Correct, yep.
So I have two questions about that. Are we expecting this to be completed before school starts?
Definitely.
Okay, good. And then there is that, I don't even know what you call them, those posts in the middle of the road.
Delineators, yep.
Delineators, wow, that's a fancy name. Do you know what I'm talking about, that tells them not to drive across? So how does that, just as a curiosity, how does that work? Obviously, they're going to need to get taken away for the repaving. Are we responsible for that? Have we discussed this with RCI? Are they aware that those delineators are going to be removed?
Yeah, that, those are part of, when we went through with the school district a couple of years ago on improvements, to try to make improvements to the traffic flow in that area, that was when we made the no-left turn, or the school district wanted the no-left turn out, and we elected to kind of go to a, well, they elected to go to a cheaper option, which was just those delineators versus reconstructing everything there.
Okay.
So actually, the school district does reimburse us for those, and those are movable. They just need new sticky pads, and you take them off and put them back on. In fact, a lot of them, we buy a box of them every year, because some people still are getting their right and left, you know, mixed up sometimes. But it's intermediate school, you know, it's like, they're still getting that figured out.
When you have a middle schooler, sometimes you just need to take a left-hand turn.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else on this item? Okay, everyone, motion second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Thank you, Lauren and Jeff. Item nine, new business.
Can we go back to that, because I was, I was kind of doing this, and Tim made this comment. This is under budget. Just want to clarify that this is a project that is under... Just wanna clarify that this is a project that is under budget.
Yeah.
Under the projected budget.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just wanna add that.
We usually let Tom and Lynn say that, that's why.
I was just wondering about that. Did Tom put you up to that or? Okay, item nine, new business items for discussion or possible action. A, close Village Hall offices on Wednesday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four for final prep. Cleanup of one seventeen Spring Street facility strike, staff recommendation motion to approve as presented. Jason and Tom.
And if any of you guys wanna come help, you're welcome.
I still have my key. No one ever asks for it back.
Voting in the affirmative means you have to help, by the way.
What, what all is left there to be cleaned out?
There are some records that still need to be gone through to see if they need to come over or if they can be destroyed. Um, there's furniture in some of the, some of the rooms that we plan on taking to the community room to see if we can either sell, auction off or.
Kind of like some of those, uh, cliff dwellings, you know, there's pot shards around and, you know, old, old archaeological things. But no, there's just, I mean, when we moved, we, we moved out and we moved everything that we knew we needed. But there's just, there's some stuff down in the basement, huh?
Some centipedes probably stuck over there.
Yeah, no, there's just stuff we wanna kind of get done and out of there completely.
Just wanna clean it up.
Clean, clean it up, yeah.
If, if you aren't, are you truly looking for help?
You, you don't need to help, but if you, if you're interested, yeah.
Could you send a, an email out or something to notify times to be there?
Yep, I'm working on the schedule as we speak because I'm assigning people to rooms and stuff.
Make sure you wear rubber gloves.
As man.
But then the, the calendar at the end of the packet says the senior center and library are also closed that day? Is that accurate?
That might be a mistake.
Closed that day.
Yeah. I will have, um, I did not notice that, but you said it was in the calendar?
The, if you go down to the bottom of the packet.
Yeah, eleven A.
The reality calendar?
Oh, it just says Village Hall closed for final cleanup of old Village Hall.
You might be referring to on the left of the schedule, it says, uh, June nineteenth and that's the holiday.
The holiday, yeah.
Is that what you're talking about?
Maybe that's what you're grabbing.
I can't find it.
Okay, so we have a motion second, any more discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Nine B, review budgetary projections and referendum information to exceed limit limits.
Settle it.
Hang on a little bit, I'll take a break.
Take your motion sickness pill. It's gonna be.
Taken over here.
I'm already placing myself.
I just printed it so I wouldn't have to look.
Deep breaths, everyone, deep breaths.
Reputation here. Alright. Uh, so, let's see. Alright, so last meeting, we obviously talked about the new tenant's position. The decision by the board was to approve the position to start October first of this year, uh, which means we'll probably start a recruitment process as early as July first. Uh, we don't anticipate a, any budgetary issues with filling that position this year since we're filling it so late in the year, plus, um, we know that there's been vacancies in the police department. And we know that investment income from interest rates continues to be elevated. So, um, don't expect a budget issue for twenty twenty-four. But then when we look forward into twenty twenty-five and beyond, uh, the ability to fund that position in an ongoing basis, uh, without, um, like vacancies and relying on investment income is not assured. Uh, so at the last meeting, we went, uh, had a discussion and, uh, kind of went in a lot of different directions. Um, and so I, I'm trying to, in this, in this item in my memo, to try to capture, uh, sort of all the different, I guess, angles to look at this. Uh, I guess there's really sort of three buckets that we need to kind of think about. One is just, there was some conversation about, um, context and, um, I guess, how does this budget issue occurring? Why is it occurring? Um, and what's kind of behind that? Uh, and then there is the, I guess, short-term, uh, issue, budget issue of how are we gonna handle the twenty twenty-five budget if we already know going in that, we're either gonna be in a deficit or, um, close to a deficit? And then there's the longer term budget issue, which is just, uh, ongoing. Um, how are we gonna keep managing this in an ongoing basis? And we talked briefly about a referendum, um, at the last, uh, meeting as well. So I'm gonna try to handle those three items in a row. So for context, um, and I'm gonna try to be brief here, just knowing that we've had some of these conversations at the budget process, during the budget process, during the capital plan process, um, even earlier this year as we were going through the debt plan. But I think for the most part, this board and, and staff are pretty familiar with property tax levy limits. So we are constrained, local governments are constrained by state law from increasing our property taxes uh, by a factor of new construction value that's created in the community. So you can't raise your property taxes without, you know, based on inflation or CPI or, uh, appreciation of existing value. It's all based on whether your community is growing, uh, uh, on new construction. Uh, and so that is only strictly based on, um, on, ongoing operational expenses. So when we talk about debt, um, which we do often and have done recently, the property taxes that go to debt, um, are a lot less restricted. Um, you basically can raise the amount of property taxes that you need to cover your debt service payments, up to your statutory limit, um, so you can keep going until that point. And we have a self-imposed limit on our amount of debt too that we have. Uh, so there's a, a significant constraint there. Um, there's also limited revenue options that we have generally. So about ninety percent of our ongoing expenses for operations is either tied up in property taxes or shared revenues from the state. Shared revenues are annual grants of funds that every local government receives. There's not really any way significantly that we can control that. So about ninety percent of your budget is in some ways almost entirely out of your control. Um, and ten percent is, you know, unreliable stuff, permit fees, investment income, um, things that we generally can predict reasonably, but can't necessarily expect year after year after year. Um, and I just wanted to show, I'm gonna start my scrolling early apparently. So, uh, in the, uh, packet, I actually show, I apologize, I'm gonna scroll a little bit. Just look away. So I just wanted to show for context, so when we do, when we figure out our levy limit every year, it's kind of like doing your income taxes. So there is a worksheet that we fill out. Um, and there's a bunch of different sections on deductions and credits and all sorts of different things, just like when you do your taxes. So it helps us determine how much levy we can have. Um, so this is probably the way that you can kind of see it manifest for, in terms of op- ongoing expenses versus debt. So this number here, I'll zoom in a little bit, is the amount of actual levy that we can take for, um, ongoing stuff. And then you add net new construction, which is that construction value. Last year, we had almost three percent. And then you can see that difference there, five seven nine two between five six two six, something like a hundred and sixty-ish thousand. That was how much we could add on to our levy for ongoing expenses this last year. Now you have some adjustments and some credits and things that you can go through. As you can see, there's three million dollars in adjustments. And so you go to that part of the worksheet, you can say that's for debt service levy after, for geo-debt authorized after July one, two thousand and five. So that's where that, that whole cut, that thing comes into play right there with that services, where that's where we can start exempting that. And that's how we get, end up with, uh, nine million dollars in allowable levy because five seven, five point seven is for just, that's our amount that we have for expenses. And then that three million, three point three is for debt. So I just wanted to help show that. And then another thing that I wanted to show too, um, just for clarification, is, again, I'm gonna go back, look away. Not too far. So it's a little bit closer. So just visualizing our village funds. So again, this is just, I know we go through this in the budget process, but I just wanna make sure that we understand kind of situation with property taxes. So, uh, when we talk about village funds, we have really three different, uh, buckets of funds. We have fiduciary funds, proprietary funds and governmental funds. The fiduciary funds are basically funds that we have on behalf of somebody or something else. Um, usually it's like a bequest, somebody's giving us some money that we're giving, that we're maintaining and that, that, there's like strings attached that have to be given to a specific use. Obviously, libraries, cemetery are, um, good examples of that and we have two funds for that. Proprietary funds are, are sometimes called enterprise funds. These are our utilities, so these are funds that are run like businesses, basically, or sort of businesses. They, they provide a service. And then there is a, uh, a rate, a user rate that somebody, that our customers are charged based on their usage of that service. So those are sort of separated out, um, and, and go under that, that fund. Then there's governmental, which is everything else. So everything that we do as a village, except for utilities essentially, is under the governmental side. And we break that out a little bit further in terms of really just accounting purposes. Sometimes we're legally required to do this, other times it's just, um, more or less for understanding and transparency in accounting. So capital projects, funds, all of our capital projects, we break out and show those separately into different funds so that we can kind of see how much those projects are expending and what kind of revenues are coming in specifically for those, um, projects. Debt service funds are very similar. These are legally required to be set up when we have debt, um, but basically just showing the expenses towards debt service and then the, the revenues that are coming in to offset that. Special revenue funds are, um, sort of all over the board, but most of them are tied to a specific purpose. And they usually have their own sources of revenue or they have, uh, just whatever they get when they get it. It might be a grant, it might be, um, a donation. For example, the K nine fund is for our K nine officer. That's pretty much entirely funded by donations, um, maybe some grants, but, um, primarily donations. Um, and that offsets the cost for maintaining that, that K nine program. Um, another one would be the public art fund. We've talked about that in some recent meetings. Again, they're entirely funding all their costs through grants and donations. So we're just breaking that out and so we can sh- we can see that for, um, ease of understanding and transparency. The only two funds that are affected by, uh, sort of this ongoing revenue issue is the general fund and the library operating fund. And so the library operating fund is over here, uh, which we s- separate just for, uh, to, for distinctive purposes. And that's primarily because the library had, is a little bit of a different animal in that the library board is kind of, has this quasi-independence from the village board. So we wanna make sure that we're separating that out and, uh, we're easily understanding what is the monies that are supposed to be for the library. On the general fund, that's everything else. So like literally everything we do, that's not, um, anywhere on this, um, uh, table. So that's, uh, village administration, clerks, finance, public safety, police, fire, EMS, public works, um, zoning, planning, senior centers, uh, everything that we do is under there. So everything that happens for expenses for our services comes out of either the general fund or the library operating fund, and that is primarily funded by property taxes. Um, so historically speaking, so, uh, levy limits have been in place since two thousand and five. So we've, we're about twenty years into this. Um, and for about the last twenty years, since about two thousand and three, all the way up until last year, shared revenues, which is that other big piece of revenue that we receive, was either flat or, um, falling. Now, last year, we had this, the change in the state legislation that caused our shared revenues to go up. But now they're sort of reset at a higher amount. And then, uh, there is a little bit of opportunity for some growth there, but generally, um, there, it's expected that with the increase that they'll be either relatively flat or slightly increasing, potentially slightly decreasing, as I understand it. Uh, because it's now tied to sales tax, um, there's an element tied to sales tax. So, um, so obviously, when you have ninety percent of your revenues that are either constrained or falling, um, that makes it very challenging. Um, and I would say, you know, I started in local government, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. So I've been around for most of the, this, this era. Uh, I'd say in the first five to ten years, and this is just speaking broadly, um, I think those laws, uh, were doing what they probably intended, which was to make local government cut the fat, um, if, if there was any. Um, I think there was a lot of, uh, reorienting towards, uh, being a lot leaner in budgets during that time. Maybe getting rid of some services or reducing services that people realized they didn't really actually need. Um, outsourcing became, was another common thing that was happening. So there was, uh, a period of that happening. And then I would say probably around the later part of the last decade, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, was when, um, you started seeing some different techniques used. You can, I mean, the wheel tax went from like three communities in twenty ten to, you know, forty communities by, you know, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. So you started seeing communities starting to pull on these different options that were out there. Um, and then, uh, referendums started to become a little bit more common, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And then COVID and the inflation hit. And then I think that really changed, uh, communities' thinking. And now you're seeing what we're seeing with referendums, um, dramatically increasing in the last, you know, three to four years. And I would say we're, we're sort of on the same path as quite a lot of communities. I guess I'll stop there and ask if there's any questions on that context? If there's anything I can explain, explain a little bit more?
I guess just for clarification purposes, so basically, we were, we're talking about two different kinds of elements in the budgets when we talk about things. We talk about our capital and our infrastructure kinds of things that we mainly do through borrowing. That is handled differently in relationship to the revenues that we could, can collect through property taxes. It comes from a kind of a different bucket, so to speak.
Yeah, they're, they're handled differently, uh, and it's the same thing. It's, it's property taxes.
Right.
But they're handled through two different mechanisms, basically. Um, for debt, as I said, it's, it's very flexible. Basically, you can, if you can show that you need, um, property taxes to cover your debt payments, you can keep taking more property taxes all the way up until your statutory limit, uh, which is relatively a lot. Um, we're only at, I mean, we've done what we've done recently even with a new library and we're at something like forty-five percent of our limit. So we've done quite a bit of debt and we're still only at forty-five percent. And so really, the only, um, limitation often there is just political. You know, what, what does the, the governing body wanna accept as the amount of debt? And what is acceptable to the amount of impact on property taxes that debt has?
So the other part of the, that, where the real restriction comes into is in your operating budgets. And that pretty much comes down to the staffing and the people doing the work. I mean, because that's, that's gonna be ninety percent of your general fund.
Right.
So, uh, the, the scenario is we could, we can build buildings, we can put structures up, but we can't staff them.
Yes, yes, you, you have a lot of flexibility. You have a, a, an easy funding source basically for capital, for building things, reconstructing things, but.
We can buy a squad car, but we can't put a, a police officer in the squad car.
Exactly. So, yes, so the operating, the operating, which is of course staff, everything that keeps the doors open and lights on for delivering all of our services, that is heavily constrained. And so that's where that, uh, new construction factor comes in. And so, you know, it's both, it's two sides of the coin. One side is you're not growing at all. You basically have no- nothing, you know, ask the towns, you know, a lot of towns around here, what they've been able to get from property taxes in the last twenty years, basically nothing. But the other problem, there's a reverse problem where if you're growing too much, it's not, the amount that you get from that value is just not enough to keep up with, and that's obviously what we're seeing certainly here.
Okay, I have just a really quick question about the self-imposed limit that we've put on our debt. Chart, when did that happen? What does that look like as far as making changes? We're never close to it, right? We're very careful about being far from it. If, my thought process is that if we're having a discussion about increasing property taxes, is there a way that we can explain the self-imposed limit and even potentially talk about low, adjusting that so that in good faith, we're telling a property taxpayer, we're not going to increase for this and also try and be as close to the ceiling? Is my thought process making any sense to anybody? Let's just back up, tell me about the self-imposed limit, how did that happen?
So on the debt side, so there's a statutory limit to how much debt you can have, and that is five percent of your equalized value. Of course, the village is worth like 1.8 billion dollars, so five percent is quite a bit. Like I said, we're at like forty-four percent of that, we have a self-imposed limit of seventy-five percent. And that's generally been the practice, I would say, in the village for many, many years. I think it was maybe a little bit lower was maybe the, the practice, maybe sixty or sixty-five percent, it was kind of a rule of thumb, maybe.
Yeah, it was, it was lower, we tried to keep like below fifty percent, I think, before. I mean, we were at thirty percent and now we're at forty with all the major projects, like you were saying. So we haven't really increased it a lot, but we've done a lot of projects.
Yep, so, yeah, so for many years, there was sort of a rule of thumb practice that was used. Now, last year, we adopted the financial policies handbook, which codified a lot of those standards that, rules of thumb that we had. And that put into place sort of the formal policy now that we have a seventy-five percent limit. And seventy-five percent, I think, is, is pretty common for most communities as a max. And the reason why that, that it is common is that extra twenty-five percent is there in case of an emergency. You know, in the course of regular operations and doing what we're doing, we're willing to go up to around seventy-five percent. But that extra twenty-five percent is, something happens and we need to borrow some money because we just don't have anything, major catastrophe, et cetera, et cetera, yep. So does that answer?
Yeah, we'll stop there, and my thought process, I will figure that out better, to explain that better.
No, my question was answered.
Oh, okay.
All right, so for the village, so that's sort of maybe the broader kind of macro world of local government. So for the village, specifically, you know, looking at our budget, and certainly if you've been through a few budget processes, especially the last two or three, we've, we've done a lot of financial management planning to project out where we're headed. And in the packet, I have a couple of things in there on, sorry, I'm gonna scroll again. So these, these two documents may look familiar, it's general fund summary and then library operating fund summary. So among other things in our financial management plan that we do every year, we project out where the general fund is going, and obviously, it's based on a lot of assumptions. But two, two years ago, 2022, 23, we were projected to, make sure, I wanna make sure my numbers here are right, enter a deficit in 23, and then actually, all things being equal and based on the projections, if no other changes occurred, basically, the general fund would be out of money by 27. Now, that never happened because this board talked about it and put in place the wheel tax and streetlight fee. That added about half a million dollars in revenue. And then last year, on top of that, we had the change in the state shared revenue law. So all told, over the last two years, we've added about three quarters of a million dollars in revenue. And so the projection last fall was that, basically, we sort of pushed it down the line a little bit in that a deficit, a smaller deficit may occur in 25, and then that would sort of ramp up pretty quickly, and then we would be out of money, all things being equal, by 2030. So one of the things that I did for this, this meeting was look at, okay, we know a few more things since the fall. Obviously, we talked about the lieutenant's position. And there's a couple of other things that have come up over the last few meetings in late last year. But if we look at a pretty rudimentary look at maybe where 2025 will be and 2026 will be. So for 2025, you know, looking at some, looking at our budgets and where they've been and where, you know, our, our property taxes are going based on growth, in my opinion, it's pretty reasonable to expect around two hundred thousand in new revenue for expenditures, assuming we only do one step on our wage scale, we meet our contractual obligations with the police union, assume some changes with health insurance, as far as just increases, it was a pretty large increase last year, and I'm sure that we can expect or should expect some further increases. And then assuming some operating inflation, we know costs are going up for everything, utilities, costs, fuel, supplies, our contractual services. And then we, we know that there's a few new requests that exist out there, obviously, the lieutenant. We know last November, the public works department presented their organizational plan going forward. They had a parks crew employee for 2025 programmed. We had Chief Lindzmyer in here a few meetings ago, talking about their request for a new firefighter in 2025. Plus, we know that they're trying to boost up their paid-on-call, paid-on-premise. So those are sort of the, what I would guess are the expected knowns for going into the budget. Now, there's a couple of areas where I think there'll be some savings. We had some, we had thirty thousand dollars in operating contingency in this budget that we can use up. And then this was a big election year, is a big election year, so we had that election budget pre-bifed up a lot more. Obviously, next year, there's maybe only one, possibly two. So we know that'll go down at least for 2025. But based on that, I think it's a pretty reasonable project around a three hundred, four hundred thousand dollar deficit, assuming all these things are in there, and that's what we move forward with. So, so three hundred and thirty thousand dollars is not chump change for us, for the village. So, and I have some examples in here. That's about half of our annual contribution to the fire district. It's a hundred thousand more than our entire snow and ice control budget, it's fifty thousand more than our entire parks budget. It's about the same amount of money we receive from the wheel tax. And if we use just our general fund reserve to cover that, we'd actually be below our minimum fund balance policy. So we have a minimum reserve policy, and we would dip below that, just using that. So obviously, that's problematic, and so it's good that we're, we're talking now and having this conversation. At the last meeting, I had this list of things of different options that we could take. We started to talk about a referendum. I guess I'll just stop there and just ask, in that part of the conversation, is there any questions?
All right, so, and, and this is for context, and some of these I emailed you about, but I, I would like the rest of the board to know as well as we consider this. So over the past ten years, and I know it's been through a lot of hard work, generally speaking, the village has had a budget surplus, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And me knowing you as I do, I'm assuming this is conservative projections on both of those, income and expense? So, so is it possible that we, and we can't bank on this forever, but is it possible that we'd have a 2024 surplus that we could? I, I know there's a policy that says we need to carry a certain amount into 2025, especially if the budget goes up. But would, would we be able to carry some of that forward possibly into 2025 instead of using it? Well, like I know we have on capital improvement projects instead of borrowing?
Yeah, yeah, so what we typically do, so for budgeting, we obviously, our philosophy is to budget conservatively, because we certainly wanna be in a surplus at the end of the year than, than trying to make up a deficit. And so most years, we'll kick out a surplus that's ranged anywhere, you know, I was looking at it today, from around a hundred to two hundred thousand. Now, in recent years, that's been a little bit different, we've been kicking out some pretty big surpluses since about 2020. In 2020 and 21, those were influenced by COVID, especially 2020, because I believe the village actually furloughed employees, services were closed, we didn't spend money, basically. And so there was like something like a six hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand dollar surplus that year. That bled over a little bit into, into 21 as well. And what we've seen since then is two things. One has been the vacancies in the police department have been consistent for these last four or five years now. So those have been kicking out, we've been budgeting those, assuming that they'll be covered for the full year. But then obviously, when they're not filled, then money goes unspent and then kicks out. And then the second piece of that has been this investment income over the last two years, approaching two years now. You know, between 2008 and, you know, 2022, interest rates were, you know, nothing, you know, they were very low. And so we, we didn't make a lot off of investment income, because obviously, we invest that pretty conservatively, the village's funds. So there wasn't a strong reliance on that. Now, last year, we kicked out something like two hundred thousand more than we expected. So we, for 2024, we, we bumped that up a little bit, relying on that a little bit, but we were pretty conservative. And I would guess that it'll probably kick out another surplus this year. Now, we're adding the lieutenant's position in this year. We'll see, you know, I mean, there'll be a new cost that'll add in, and that may offset some of these, these things that are occurring. But what happens when we have a surplus and our, and the policies that we have now support this is we use those funds for one-time expenses, so capital costs, things of that nature. So we don't have to borrow as much money, and of course, we just went through that process here the last couple of months, where we are able to reduce the borrowing by, you know, something like seven hundred thousand dollars due to being able to have some of these funds available that we've kicked out in previous budget cycles. But yes, so an option is, if there is a surplus that is kicked out, it can be used for, we can use it to budget for ongoing expenses in the next budget, with the understanding that it's not going to be there potentially the following year.
And the, the last thing with operational reserves, and thank you for your information on that. I know we have a maximum threshold and a minimum threshold, and it's meant for one-time expense. Could we, as a board, if we decide we know we're going to do a referendum and plan on it passing, use it for a one-time expense of an operational shortfall in 2025? Knowing that if the referendum would fail, we'd have some really hard decisions to make looking into 2026.
Yeah, so the general fund has a reserve balance, and that target is between twenty-five percent and thirty-five percent of the following year's total expenditures. So right now, that is roughly around two point five million we have. And that's for, again, emergencies, things that come up, so that we have cash on hand. It's there for just cash liquidity, because revenues and expenses happen in different parts of the year, and just making sure that we have some of those funds, that cash actually available helps with, with that. It also goes towards, you know, rating agencies look at it, when we go out to do, take our debt obligations, they base our credit on that, base our interest rates on that, that sort of thing. And they like, obviously, that we have what we have in place. So, yes, I would say we've, we've generally kept that target at thirty percent over the last ten years, just right smack dab in the middle of that twenty-five and thirty-five percent. And what happens at the, the year end, and the audit is complete, we know how much surplus we have. What we'll do is a couple of things, one, we'll, we'll use some of that to backfill the reserve to make, because expenses go up every year, and so the target is moving, and so we have to backfill that reserve to make sure it stays up. So we'll use some of that surplus to backfill it, and then we'll transfer out the rest of it towards capital projects and things of that nature. So, yeah, I would say there could be, you could use that amount of money, you know, the, the amount between twenty-five percent and thirty percent is still within your target. So you could use some of that and still be within your target. But yeah, I would say, again, you'd wanna have a plan and, and, and know what you're doing and make sure that it's not an ongoing thing.
Right, thank you.
I guess I'd like to separate this into two discussions. One is the question about the referendum and how do we want to approach the directions we wanna take on the referendum. The second is what direction we wanna give in relationship to 2025. And I'd like to talk about the referendum, the idea of a referendum and what we wanna do in the direction we wanna, if that's appropriate.
Yep.
I guess I, at this point, given the revenue directions that, and the opportunities and what the legislative restrictions, a referendum for us is inevitable. We're gonna, we're gonna, if, if you don't do it in 2026, you're gonna do it, or for 2025, you're gonna do it the next year, because sooner or later, it's gonna happen. I think there's some optics in relationship to a referendum that are, it's a huge communications project. We have some big things that we wanna do from a capital budget perspective that creates misunderstandings when people look at things, and I think that's a really huge communications effort. And I guess I would look to see if we could, you know, incorporate or use some public relations and some communications budget to actually address those kinds of things. So I would speak in favor of both that, number one, and number two, and in Martin's items here. And I guess I don't know how you wanna proceed on that. Were you done with your?
Well, I can, I can talk about, a little bit about the referendum if you want to. So, yeah, I think first of all, it's, are we, this kind of is where things can get a little complicated, because we could go off in all sorts of different directions. It's just, I just reminded myself of Matt Dregney saying that, complicated. It's complex. So we could take this in so many different directions, and so I think let's, let's try to kind of orient ourselves here and have a discussion about exactly where we wanna go with it. I think, you know, first and foremost, you could throw a referendum, we could throw a referendum together and we could have it on in November. You know, I think there's only seventy days requirement for, for that. And, and certainly, you know, I talked to, and I'll expand on this a little bit more in a bit, but, you know, I talked to others, you know, they're our financial advisor, and they had an example of a community who decided at the end of last year, they wanted to do one in April, and they threw one together and it passed in April. So it could work. But there's certainly, certainly things that, and of course, you could do all the preparation in the world, and then it could fail, right? So it's, you, you know, we have to kind of go into that, understanding that, and you need to figure out where that balance is and what this body and what this community will support. So I think for, well, a couple of things. So number one, there's a sort of an education There's a sort of an education piece here, just broadly with. The, the board, I think, staff and then the public in general. And so in the, in the, um, packet, I have a few things in there. Uh, would encourage, encourage you to read through them. Um, there's a few articles in there from the league. Um, some public, Wisconsin Public Radio News articles and Wisconsin Policy Forum, um, paper on just referenda in general. And sort of expanding on what I talked about earlier, um, there's a good, um, report from UW Madison in twenty twenty about. Um, things that communities, it appears have done to cause success. Um, in terms of just wording about items, timing, and then communicating to the public. Um, all of those different things. So, um, I think as we go into this, um. And we're thinking, you know, most likely next year, if that's what we're looking at, April may be the only election. We could do February, but we may not have a primary, although we could create, we could make a primary with just the referendum here. Um, so we're looking at April. Um, and again, I apologize, because I'm gonna have to scroll a little bit here. So I mapped out. Be hard to see, but. What that could potentially look like. So. There's some analysis work, and I'll talk about that in a little bit, and community engagement. That we would continue on through the rest of this year, but by December, we're really gonna have to start figuring out. We're, we're gonna have to be really zoned in at that point on what exactly we're doing, and then we have to make that decision at the latest, that probably that first meeting in January. Um, because we'll have a ba- a ballot deadline of late January, uh, for getting that information to, to be on the ballot. Um, there's some noticing that has to happen, um, with just getting that stuff out there between February and March. Uh, and then, of course, Election Day is in, uh, and it isn't in April. So that kind of maps out what that sort of looks like. Um, and then I just added, obviously, the lieutenant was the thing that, that triggered this. And so that, have that timeline here. We have our annual operational budget review in that time and then the budget approval. Um, and then as far as where we go after that. Um, you know, January twenty twenty six would be when we first have that new cash from a potential approved referendum. So, as we've talked about, there's gonna be that twenty twenty five budget year. That would be kind of a, a limbo year where we're hanging out there and trying to figure out how to, to address sort of the short-term deficit part of it. Um, so with a referendum, uh, a couple of things. To think about and, and we should talk about are. Obviously, there's going to be some financial analysis work that we have to go through to figure out impacts and. What we need and dollar amounts and that sort of thing. Obviously, we have elders that can help us. I've actually asked them to come to the next meeting. To talk about referendums and just give a presentation and just keep sort of this educational element going. And just getting more information on what they're seeing and, and advice that they could be giving us. Uh, as, as Tom pointed out, uh, certainly a lot of communities and school districts are using. Public relations and communications firms to help communicate, um, the, the need. Uh, the example I have in here is Fitchburg or neighbors to the north. They're working on this process right now. Um, so they've actually brought on two firms. They had one that's just helping them as a board. To develop a, a, a PR and, and communication strategy and help them refine their ask. So that they can go out and sell it. Uh, and then they have a second firm that came on who's been doing a community-wide survey for them. Uh, and that's really intended, and that was emailed to every residential address in the city. And that's really intended to try to capture what are people gonna support, um, in a, a possible referendum. Um, and obviously, as I note here, they expect there to be about a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in on those two efforts combined. But again, I mean, they're three times the size of us. Is that gonna be our cost and our need? You know, we're not necessarily gonna have all the same needs that they have as well. Um, the other thing I think to think about too, um. As part of this, and I, I, I guess my suggestion would be certainly we'd want to bring on some kind of public relations or communications consultant. But this, this third one here is a little bit more compl- complicated, um. So. I think certainly in terms of what we're, what's needed and evaluating what's needed. Obviously, we can put the call out to departments, department heads and say what is needed, you know, for this, for this referendum. You know, over a certain period of time and so on and so forth. Um, but there may be a desire, uh, and, and this is gonna be a, a conversation with the board, which is. Uh, do we want some kind of supporting analysis done, um, that says, that we can point to and say, well. Uh, yes, we've done a study, we've done an analysis, we've brought somebody in, somebody's looked at this, it's not just us saying this. It's somebody with a third, uh, second set of eyes, a different perspective, who's saying, yes, this is supported and we can rely on that, we can sell that. Um, you know, this would look something like a, a staffing study or a workload analysis study. So, looking at our departments and, uh, reviewing, uh, efficiency, effectiveness. Accountability of everything, um, and then putting out some kind of report that either says, yep, we agree. These are the things that are needed and when they're needed, and these are the priorities, or actually we found some things that maybe we disagree with. Um, and then we can have those conversations. I don't know that those are necessarily necessary. Again, this is kind of comes back to. Do we think it will be beneficial? Do you, do we think it will sell, help sell to the community? Is that information that's gonna help inform us as we develop the, the referendum? Um, you know, again, I would use the example that I had in here, which was, which was Fis- Fitchburg. They did a staffing study last year in twenty twenty three, um, and they're certainly using that to help inform their referendum. Um, now, the challenge I think that we have with some of the, this work is. We're, it's already really tight to be able to, to conduct this work. Um, we're, you know, if we're looking at December to really have, um, pretty much the final. Pretty close to the final details of this, um, by the time we get going with somebody on board and then getting the work done. You know, we maybe have four, six months at best to try to, you know, get this work done. Again, the example I had in here, you know, Fitchburg's staffing study took eight months. So, you know, again, we're starting to kind of constrain. So, again, I think that's something to think about. Um, I had something else in here too with, um, prioritizing our budget. Um, and this may be something that we actually look at if a referendum fails. And bringing somebody on to really kind of scrap, scrape all the data, uh, of our budget and really start to look at. What's a priority and what's not a priority. Um. But I think those are. Those are probably the, the three, the, these three up here are probably the things that we need to talk about over the next. Couple of meetings, I would say, and really decide on what is necessary, what's not necessary, and then get to the work of actually doing what we think is necessary.
Who was first?
Uh, Carly and then Lynn and then Tim.
I just have a question around the staffing study and wondering if any of the work that was done in, in coming up. With the, um, with the, the salary schedule is applicable? Or if tha- that's just a whole different setup?
Yeah, I would say no, because that was really just e- evaluating existing positions and.
But not like looking for redundancies and gaps.
Right.
None of that.
None of that.
Okay, I have three things. The first is just a comment, um, piggybacking off of what Tom said. I think it is really important that we immediately divide these discussions between. The budget and the referendum, because I do not want it to seem as if we are going to referendum. Because we added this lieutenant position. I don't want someone who is not as steeped in this to look at this and say. The board approved this position and now they're asking, that's not what's happening here, right? There is increased costs, there are changes, there, this was inevitable, right? So I just think it's super important in my mind that these be really separate agenda items in the future. That we have really separate discussions about them, so that that messaging can start from, from day one. But that's just me, I'm only one oh seven. Um, quick question for you, uh, Martin. To move to a referendum, do, would we just have to vote on that? Would that just be like a? Roll call vote?
In terms of either like the formal action or like the process leading up to the formal action?
Well, I think that's both of my, like, we're kind of dipping our toes in this water, and at what point do you need us to like dive or to get out?
So, uh, I would say. I guess in, in my mind, we, we probably want to have some kind of, and this, this actually goes against what you just said, because it's gonna tie the budget in this together. But I think we need, and they can be separate actually, but we need some sort of resolution documenting. On the budget side, what is the plan for the twenty twenty five budget? And two, I, I think we could incorporate within that, or again, as a separate resolution. We're moving ahead with a referendum for, we're planning on a referendum for April twenty twenty five. Um, and I think that would just be the direction that we need to, to proceed with that. And then there'll be this period of time where we're doing whatever we think is necessary, uh, and then, and. December, January, we'll have to adopt an actual formal resolution with the language, with all the uses, with the dollar amounts. And then that's, then it's going on the ballot. It's basically a resolution that puts it on the ballot.
And that would simply be a majority vote?
Yes.
Okay. My proposal is that we work to find a way that this is a unanimous, like, that all of the board members are in favor of whatever we choose to do. Could be impossible. Um, and then my last little piece is, um, where does the cost of, uh. A referendum study, staffing study, where does that come from?
I think what we do is we'd go back and look, um, at our, uh, recent surpluses. That we've moved towards capital funds and see if there are still some available funds that we could pull from. Um, to use that, or, and if not, uh, we could pull on the reserve fund balance. Um, like I said, we're at around thirty percent, so we're still in the target if we use some, but that would be where we would pull it from.
So if we're talking about that number that you're saying we need to find in twenty twenty five, we should conservatively estimate. A good amount of extra if we're also thinking referendum, which is again, joining these two topics. But ultimately, for cost purposes, we need to find hmm, more money. For that as well.
Yeah.
Just, okay.
I, the cost for, for the, for developing the referendum and the document, that'll be within twenty twenty four.
Right, yes, that, that cost will be this year, but.
Right, be within your, your budget, that you're funding that you have now.
Oh, so it wouldn't be from the survey.
Well, it might, it might come from our, you know, this year if we have, continue to have good investment income. Or we have, have, continue on, or have, uh, a contingency within this year's budget. Then, then those, those would be things we could apply or would work towards paying for the cost to develop the referendum.
Yes.
For the referendum itself, I mean, that's, that's by December, we're, we're, we're gonna put it up, be putting it on the ballot and then the vote and, and all of those things.
Yeah, the cost to prepare for a referendum, if there are any, and there'd be some, I mean, there'd be some others' work. There would be, if we do a PR, obviously, and then if we do any other supporting work, there'll be some cost. And, uh, the, obviously, those costs aren't budgeted, they're, they're new costs. But, yeah, again, I think it would be, and Tom said it perfectly. We'd look at this year's budget and see where we're, we're performing and maybe if we can reasonably a- anticipate some money being available. Um, and then two, we would look at what monies have we transferred out from pri- prior year surpluses. It, that are now sitting in capital funds that we haven't, um, dedicated to something else. That, and could be available to, you know, send back to, to use for this. Um, or a third option would be to use general fund reserve. Um, and still be within the target that we're within. So there's, between those three options. Depending on the scale of the cost, uh, uh, that we're thinking about, um, I'm sure it's, it's probably pretty reasonable that we can expend some of those funds.
Okay, um, I have a lot of thoughts, tended, gonna kind of burst out here. Um, I think an April twenty twenty five amendment is a bad idea. Um, my con- my thoughts on that are that the referendum. Is a medium-term solution. It's not the way you fix a shortfall where we're coming up short for twenty twenty five. And that's supported by the data in the, uh, League of Municipalities article. That shows that short-term, one-off referenda have tended to fail more often than longer-term, more medium-sized. Um, they also mentioned that it's probably better off in a, um. November non-presidential election, which would push us all the way out to November twenty sixth then. Um, but if we did look at that kind of timeframe, that would give us a lot more time to build the case for this. That it's really more about the strategic long-term vision of the village and how we're gonna fund it. And it would effectively put the decision in the hands of the voters to think about what kind of village they want to have. Which I think was the point of the levy limits, was to let it become a little bit more democratic in that regard. Um, that gives us time then to build the business case for it, it gives us time to build, um, support within the communities. The business community as well as the voting community. Um, but it also gives us time then to go through that budgetary priority process, which would allow us to talk about. Well, if we don't pass this, then this is probably what we're looking at in the long term. And so I really see this as a, a medium-term type of solution. You know, commercial development would probably be the long-term solution, and we have to come up with a short-term solution for twenty five. Really with or without the police lieutenant, we have some issues we have to wrestle with there, and we're gonna have to get creative on that. Um, but I really think a referendum is more something we should be looking at in an eighteen-month kind of timeframe, not a nine-month kind of timeframe.
Just for, um, uh, clarification, there, there's no election in November of what, twenty six?
Twenty five, no, but twenty six is the gubernatorial.
Twenty six, okay. Okay, uh, anybody else? Amanda?
Yeah, I like the idea of spending money on a. You know, staffing study or operational study, because I feel like those are. It would yield a result that, that is useful regardless of whether or not a referendum passes. I mean, if there are inefficiencies and somewhere, you know, that we can fix, I mean, that's good to know, right? I'm not saying it's gonna solve anything by fixing those necessarily depending on what they were defined, right? But, but, um, that makes sense to me, because we'd get useful information regardless. Um, I would like more information about whether. A spring or a fall referendum would be more likely to pass. I think we need more data there. I'm not willing to. I mean, I think timing is a lot of it, and I think definitely, um, we're. I think it's worth it to invest in a PR firm. Um, it's something the school district does and they have had really good success with it. They frame the conversation in a way that's easy for people to understand. And if we can do something like that here, making it very clear what we're spending. Or we, what we intend to spend the money on and get it out there, you know, frame it properly. I think it's got a good chance of passing either in the spring or the fall, but, you know, let's, let's look at. Which would be better. I'm not convinced that one is better than the other right now.
Well, if you, if you look at the packet first.
Uh, I have other hands up, Tim, uh, Jason and, uh, Carly.
So, so Tim, uh, y- your thoughts are tempting to me, other than it's, uh, November twenty six. Um, is that the next? And I, I had felt, uh, before I came on this board, I do know. Previous boards dealt with this issue and took up as many of the sh- a lot of the short-term solutions that were available. And we're running out of short-term solutions, and so to wait that long would. The, the options that we have for short-term solutions after that would negatively impact the services in a way. That I feel the citizens of the, the village are not in favor of. that I feel the citizens of the the village are not in favor of. It's so it 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 is a little I I'm I like to move quickly, so I feel like it's a little pushed. It might be a medium pushed to go for for April, um, but I I feel like if we wait any time beyond that, we're we're creating more problems down the road that either this board and those boards won't be able to won't be able to solve i- is my greatest concern.
Uh, Karleen.
Um, first of all, I think you're absolutely right that this November would be not only too pushed, there's just too much happening um for this November's election, including a lot of misinformation that's gonna be out there about a lot of other elections. And I think that this would get lost and probably um, not not, it wouldn't matter how much PR we did around it. It it would just be part of the cacophony of noise and so folks would would not pay attention. So I I think April is is a good option and I agree with Amanda about the staffing study. I also believe that we can um, we can lean on lots of free social media and other things to to help us push this. Um, not that we shouldn't have the guidance of messaging from a PR firm. And I guess I'm I'm kind of questioning and I and and this is for you for you, Tim, I I think that we can build in how we look at long term funding into something that we put forth in April. I don't think that we have to just stick to only thinking in short term. And so, you know, I talk about it all the time, how broken the state legislature is. And I think the long term solution has to actually come from them. Um, for the way municipalities receive shared revenue funding in 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 ways that are adequate for providing services to the people of our state. We have, we have an outflux of of residents right now in Wisconsin and if we don't make this the kind of place in Wisconsin writ large where people want to live, then that's gonna continue and starving municipalities from the state is is not helping that. That being said, I think we need to look at the the medium funding that we need to do, the medium range funding and a staffing study and um, you know, looking at our budgetary priorities could be very helpful with that, I believe.
Uh, Tim, you're up. Um, yeah, just to clarify a couple of points, I think that um the information Martin sent out does have a lot of data about what wins and what doesn't. With the caveat that it's a hundred and eight or a hundred and thirty referenda in the state of Wisconsin over more than a decade, so it's not necessarily a fully representative. The the big concern I have is with rushing into it and failing because then we're really trapped. And it's gonna be really hard to come back around two years later with another referendum and say, no, wait this time. Um, and so that's that's a big concern there. But the I guess I'll stop at that.
I'm gonna step in, uh, but I've got you down Lynn and Tom.
A lot of these questions uh could be uh answered by elders when they come over.
At least we could, if they can't answer them, I think that we can point questions back to them and they could provide that to us. Is that accurate?
I think so. I I mean, I think they're certainly advising a lot of clients on these right now and they've certainly had gone through these experiences, so I think they'll be able to tell. They'll be able to give some best practices and some trends to some things. Um, and certainly, you know, to Tim's point, I think, you know, that twenty twenty study from UW certainly supports a lot of what you're saying, Tim, and I would agree with that and you know, right here, you know, one of the recommendations they have, limit the the levy levy limit referenda to general election and even numbered years to take advantage of higher voter turnout and reduce election related costs. And that's, I've heard that from some of my counterparts in other communities that that's the advice they're getting from some of these PR firms is actually higher turnout is showing a better chance of of passage than than in the non uh turnout, the lower turnout elections. But that I mean, that's certainly something we can we can talk about. We we don't have to make any decisions tonight, but I think over the next, you know, one to two or most three meetings, we need to figure out um sort of the direction that we we want to go in.
So I see right now it appears we have consensus to have a referendum and I also believe that we could probably talk a lot about when and how to proceed, et cetera, et cetera, but I I would think that the next best step would be to have elders come in and at least set the groundwork for us. They can provide us with basic information. They're provided, they'll be in a position to answer some of our questions that, you know, I don't think any of us have. Um, so I would just uh make that suggestion, but right now I have Lynn and then I think Tom.
Well, Phil, I'm glad he stepped in because that's kind of what I was, I I feel like we're chasing our tail in the sense that I think we're all open to this discussion. I want to be aware though that for village staff, these are a lot of discussions, decisions, especially for the twenty five budget that like you need us to move forward on. And so I agree with you. I think let's have elders come in as far as the twenty twenty five budget, so like in the other bucket of this discussion, what do you need from us right now? M- my thought is that like Jason's bringing up an interesting point about maybe relying on some riskier ideas. I I I need numbers. So like that list of suggestions that you provided, I thought was really interesting. But I have very little awareness of like what some of those would yield in terms of.
Savings?
Yeah, money. Yeah, like you had suggested like a a closure of of village, you know, entities, like i- i- if we adjust hours or like is is that a choice that doesn't really yield us a ton of money? Like I I I think for me, I think making those decisions for you to have that next step, I would need to see numbers, but I don't know if that's what you want or need from us right now.
Um, I I guess that's a conversation we should have. I think if the plan is to do a twenty five referendum or a twenty six referendum, um we need to figure out, do we want to try to maintain for this year or two years and do I guess try to get by, basically. We'll we'll try to, we'll we'll keep the status quo. Service quality may go down because the community is growing and village is gonna stay, you know, relatively the same. So I I guess if 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 we want to try to get by until that, it's sort of the stopgap there. Um, I think we would just want to talk about how are we gonna kind of constrain the budget? Maybe we don't need to talk about cuts or reductions or eliminations at this time because maybe we won't need, maybe we will have a referendum passed and then we don't need to think about that. Um, so I guess I kind of put it back on the board in terms of do you want to plan for a twenty twenty five budget that is, I guess, constrained and just trying to to keep status quo? Or do you really want to dig, do you want to dig into, let's actually start to look about at reductions or eliminations and that sort of thing? Or is that a conversation we wait for a year and see where this referendum goes?
Uh, Tom, I think you're up.
Well, what I was gonna say is completely changed now. Well, first of all, I guess I was, what I was originally gonna say is basically what you iterated, you know, I think there's a commitment within the board to to move to a referendum, that we need some level of professional services to support us, to get the numbers, to get find out the plans, to get the things that we need in relationship. And I think that that the board is saying, let's let's do that now and begin that process. I don't know that necessarily defines when we will hold the referendum. I think that's something we will learn as we go through all of this. In relationship to the budget, I guess I I think because we're making this commitment to the referendum, I say we're just, we're just trying to get by until that. And and hope that and really work hard to make that referendum pass and that's that's where we're putting our our eggs in the basket, so to speak. And if the referendum doesn't pass, just we're gonna have to have a budget that's gonna be draconian. It's it's gonna be rough.
Amanda, then Jason.
Yeah, I'm kind of right there. I I just think we need to get going on this because the more we delay, we're gonna just I mean, the deficit each year grows every year. And so if, you know, two years from now, we're doing a referendum, we're gonna be in that much worse of a spot if it doesn't pass. I mean, the time to do this is right now. Um, and I say we proceed as if we're gonna have a referendum in probably, we we seem to be on the same page with not rushing it, so aiming for April. And if we need longer, we can always kick it back, but I'd say let's start the preparation now. Let's decide that we're gonna move forward and our, we're gonna try for April right now, but we're gonna get some experts in to help us further refine our ideas.
Jason.
So I I definitely uh prefer the word cons- constrain. Uh, thank you for that word, Martin. Um, because I am definitely not in favor of cuts and that's where Lin- Lynn called it riskier. Um, it's weird to be the risk taker in a group because that's usually not me. But but i- i- it's within the reasonable limits of what I consider um choices we can make to get to where we need to be w- when a referendum passes because that's what we're we're definitely counting on. And I and I want to say, want to avoid, eh, the cuts, I think we do want to avoid and want to focus on constraints for two reasons. Um, first, because of the level of services that are needed by the village and are expected by the village residents. Um, but also to continue to support staff. I don't want staff looking over their shoulders thinking, am I going to be a cut to get us there? Um, and and that 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 will hurt staff morale, um, hurt services for the village. Um, and honestly, I think be a disservice to folks, so so and I think we 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 can do that together. So and and Martin does a good good job of helping guide us through along with the rest of the staff, so.
Okay, so it sounds like we have a general agreement that uh we'd like to go ahead with the referendum. We also agree we'd like to have elders come in at uh soon as possible to talk to us about that.
Yeah, I I scheduled them for May twentieth, so they'll be here.
Why are we here? Anyway, uh, you need any uh action on this from this part?
So I guess so. I'll just say one thing about kind of constraining, constraining the budget. That's not without precedent. I I think between, you know, twenty, you know, referendum or the the levy limit happening, law going into place in two thousand and five and all the way up until, I mean, twenty twenty two, where we've had some of these unusual years. Um, that was what the board did. I mean, to balance the budget, it was done primarily with constraining staff uh salary increases. So they would do the, and I'm talking in broad strokes because every every situation, every budget year was different, but generally um, the budget was put together. Um, there was usually a targeted new position, one position that was tried to fit into budget. Oftentimes, it was done by funding it half of y- half of a year. And then hoping on the s- second year, they can fund the full amount of it. And then whatever was left over was a percentage increase to staff for wages. So I know I can recall at least one year where there was a zero percent for wa- for wages. Um, I think there might have been two years, but um, between about two thousand and eight, nine to twenty twenty two, you know, the salary increase for staff was mostly one, one and a half. There was a two and a two and a half, I think I can remember in there. I think the average was about a one and a half. Um, and so obviously that then manifested into what we did two years ago with the compensation plan and we were something like fourteen percent behind our peers uh on average, some more, some areas more than others. Um, and we've done a lot, you know, a lot and actually a lot of what we've new stuff that we brought in for revenue. Um, the wheel tax, street life fee and and uh the new shared revenue has offsetted a lot of those increases that we've done uh to get those staff boosted back up. So that's, it's not without precedent, uh, kind of going into the budget with this mentality. And I think this is not unique to the village of Oregon. This is common everywhere because of the the environment that we're in. Um, so it's not unusual, it's challenging, but um it's it's kind of maybe almost like back to a regular course of action comes from what we've seen the last couple of years. Uh, I I'd say, I guess, moving forward, and obviously if there's additional direction, please provide, but um, I think there's, one, I think having others come and and continue this sort of this education piece and be able to ask questions and to hear some of what their experiences have been will be good and we'll be able to sit with this for a couple more weeks. But I think we'll have to, my suggestion would be that we come back with a resolution, whether it's the next meeting or the meeting after, um, saying here's what we're expecting for the twenty twenty five budget and that is the direction we're giving to staff, whatever that looks like. So that might be, we're not going to accept budget proposals with new positions except for XYZ. Lieutenant obviously is something that we've discussed. And so creating those directions upfront so that staff departments don't waste their time, right? We want to be efficient with this process and we want to have that direction upfront. Now, the budget might act end up looking better than we think when we get into it, and so then let's have those conversations at that point. But let's not set expectations, let's set expectations and make it clear to everybody, including um, the fire district and other partners that we have that are part of this budget process. Um, and then I think another part of that resolution is then documenting that if we are going to use reserve to balance the budget, that we've done that eyes wide open and going into it and that the plan to address that is this referendum. And if that doesn't happen, then we're gonna be back here talking about what that looks like for a next step.
Okay. Amanda?
Just one one last thing. Yeah, we we can start this process and go through and if something changes, if you know, we have new legislative maps, who knows what'll happen. If something passes and our situation changes, then we say okay, never mind, we can, we can back out of this process all the way up until we put it in on the ballot, right? I mean, it's not ideal. It's a lot of staff time that, you know, but but we, you know, if we're spending money on things like um, the staff analysis and all that, those are useful to us anyway, so it's not as, it's not wasted money. It's, you know, something well spent and we get something out of it, but I mean, you have to just start the process somewhere.
Anybody else have what you need, Martin? Okay, thank you all. Uh, item ten, reports to village officers, department heads and consultants. This information will only, no action by the village board will be taken. See reports in the packet, village administrator report. Included, any questions or comments, Martin? Okay, item eleven, announcements miscellaneous business, announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events and miscellaneous business, village board members may provide brief statements, but no discussion or action of the body shall occur. There are a number of proclamations tonight and without objection, I think we'll dispense with uh reading through those. I will, uh
Just the, just the village clerk.
At the board review, I'll read those. Okay, but I will run down the list here and that is proclamation recognizing national library week between April seventh and April thirteenth, twenty twenty four.
Some of these are retroactive.
Proclamation recognizing municipal treasures appreciation week between April twenty first and April twenty seventh of twenty twenty four. first and April twenty seventh of twenty twenty four. Proclamation recognition, recognizing municipal clerk appreciation week between May fifth and May eleventh, twenty twenty four. Hold your applause to the end, please.
That's this week, though, we got to say something about that.
Feel free to comment if I'm, I don't want to get ahead. Item four, number four, proclamation recognizing National Police Week between May twelfth and May eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Proclamation recognizing National Public Works Week between May nineteenth and May twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Proclamation recognizing National Emergency Emergency Medical Services Week between May nineteenth and May twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. And that's it for the proclamations. On the, also, we have a grant award of up to six hundred and seventy thousand five hundred for the planned twenty twenty five North Oak Street reconstruction project from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, and I think that was covered in the memo. Anything to add on that, anyone?
Credit to Lauren and Lisa and her team, it's good.
Let's see. Oregon, Oregon area senior center bratbash to be held Friday, May tenth, ten AM to one PM.
That's right. Come on out, we don't have a proclamation, but we have bratwurst. So come on out.
The senior center professionals were the smart ones and put it in a different part of the year, apparently.
September.
September.
We'll wait for your proclamation until September.
There we go.
Right, but we have the bratbash, we just would invite everybody in the community to come on out and enjoy a bratwurst or a hot dog and support the senior center.
Thank you. Saturday, May eighteenth, J C Community Park dedication at nine thirty AM and Kids Get Fit event, beginning from nine AM to noon.
Can I ask a question on that?
Please.
Did you get enough signups?
For the concession stands? There's only one slot left.
Oh, wow.
Nice.
Yes.
Okay, I just went to sign up last night, and I didn't, because I was going to ask you a question, there were lots of slots. Now I'm confused.
There were.
Today was busy.
Yeah, today was busy. I came into lots of notifications.
I'll take the last slot, whenever that is, you just put me in right now.
Perfect. Amanda, clean up bathrooms.
I knew that was it, I knew it.
One, one AM to two AM.
That's why PPE exists, right?
Exactly. Perfect, thank you.
Anyway, oh, and then, village board members provide brief statements, comments, I don't want to forget that. Tim?
Stop for school buses, people.
Okay.
Yes.
Anybody else?
This, we're not the future agenda items yet, right?
We are not.
Okay. Nice job on the memo, Martin.
Okay, future items.
I would like to put something from the DEI committee on the next agenda. We have, we'd like to get some feedback on a community conversation, and we're also talking with folks from Nehemiah this week, next week, about what a community survey might look like, and just want to let, you know, let you all know what we're doing and see if that's in line with what you're thinking.
Okay.
And we have a vacancy.
And you have a vacancy, right? Lynn?
I would like to see if we could put on a future, or for the next meeting, a pet project of mine that I'm putting together with the guidance of Leanne and Martin, of a village board outreach program. Don't all cringe at once.
No, I love the idea.
I'll have more details if we can put it on the next agenda.
Without objection? Okay. Anything, anybody else? Okay, item twelve, closed session business, under discussion and possible action under Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five sub one sub E deliberating, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons regarding a closed session, attendance is limited to the village board and at its discretion, any necessary staff, other officers, and other individuals whose presence is necessary for the business at hand. Item eight, deliberate the investment of public funds, purchasing of public properties, and related negotiation strategy for economic growth and expansion of the village, we're looking for a motion to move into closed session. Jason and Tom, so roll call vote.
Peterson?
Yes.
Kirkstorf.
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Van Campen?
Yes.
Beshin?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
We are in closed session, thank you.
And we're staying here.
Staying here, yes.